The questions that have been going to be asked today were submitted by team party supporters and members. These are also people that care about community and the school board is very heart of community. It is the essence of not only controlling tens of thousands of dollars in our tax money, but also controls the orientation, the safety, and the direction of the children who are being leaders of tomorrow.
Why are we running for Fort Bend ISD school board? There's two minutes, I'm going to ask that of you and Rematch, and then we'll move to the next position.
Nurse, can you hear me?
There are several reasons why I'm running for Fort Bend ISD school board. First is my commitment to volunteerism, but one thing that's remained constant throughout my life has been my commitment to volunteerism. I've spent the past 10 years at MD Anderson visiting with cancer patients on a weekly basis. My commitment to education, I'm currently involved in the district-wide planning committee. I'm also a mentor and I'm a member of a campus-based leadership team at an at-risk campus here in Fort Bend ISD. To my third point, working in the Texas public school system has fueled my desire to be a servant to the students here in Fort Bend. And last, I'm a parent, I have a vested interest with the next two years, two of my children will be attending Fort Bend schools. Going through the process of being involved in the district the past two years has really opened my eyes to what's important to keeping local control in our school district here in Fort Bend. That is one of the most important parts of education here in Texas. I was born and raised in Texas, I grew up in the Texas education system, and we need to keep our education at our local level. Thank you.
I'm running for three reasons. The first one is the world is flat. Thanks to Fort Bend ISD, today my son is representing Fort Bend ISD in Google. It's a great experience to have. I want to ensure every child should get the experience of whatever they want to have. I want to ensure that they learn to their fullest potential. That's one thing, I would like to provide the resources to the teachers so that they can teach all the children to their full potential. The second reason is as a parent, I know it is very important for the child to come home safely. So I want to ensure that every child and the teacher is safe during the school, after the school. And the last reason I thought I'm running is I bring professional expertise, experience in the financial industry. So I should manage your dollars efficiently. Because of the 13 years of experience in the financial industry, I feel that I can feel very good guardian of your money. Those are the three reasons why I'm running for the position. Thank you.
You say that you are committed to making Fort Bend ISD a fiscally responsible school district. This is a two-part question. First, what do you see as the most important fiscal issue facing Fort Bend ISD which impacts the taxpayers the most? And secondly, if elected, what changes would you implement to make Fort Bend ISD more fiscally responsible?
Given with the first part of that question is, the most pressing financial issue we have right now is the maintenance and upkeep of our schools. As many of you are aware of, a couple of years ago, while we were all spending $18 million on iPads, we let our ACs and our systems in our side of our schools break down and get destroyed. We didn't have oversight on a contract that was awarded to a contractor. They'd been paid a million dollars a year for almost 19 years, and they did no service in this district. They had no records produced, they had no way to show they did anything. That's a problem. I run two businesses, and if I was to take the money in my business and run my business like that, I would be out of business. So it's extremely important, now that we've been presented with some $300 million-plus price tag, to put our district back in place where it should have been in the first place, that the things we spend our money on are what we really need, not what people want like an iPad. We don't need iPads. We needed ACs fixed, we needed systems fixed. And this board needs to focus directly on making those fixes. One of the ways that you change this process is you involve the community. The prior administration did most everything in a back room without community input, without community knowledge. As many of you know, you would pass a bond issue, there were certain things that were described on that bond, you would later learn that that bond was spent on other items. That's not appropriate, it's not accountability that should be held by the board. You should expect the board, when they put a bond in front of you, to tell you exactly what they're going to spend that money on, how long they're going to finance it, what type of financing they're going to use, and when they plan on doing it. And you should hold the board accountable. And that's one of the things I plan on putting in place when I do get on the board. The other thing is, is that we need to make sure we have a ton of schools that we have to build. We need to make sure that we build those schools when we need them, where we need them, and where they're most effective. And we don't bend to developers, we don't bend to special interests. We do what's in the best interest of the district and the best interest of the taxpayers of this district. Thank you.
I said, both as a financial planner and money manager, I teach people how to budget, how to properly, appropriately allocate their funds, and how to plan for future expenses and things of that nature. Chris mentioned that, that actually, you know, the maintenance is one of the major issues. Half of the need they are, the new reports showing ease maintenance, means if pass a bond and it passes, you know, if they never took care of that issue, and I believe it is irresponsible. Because the same philosophy, if you have a car, if you don't change oil for $20 a piece, for after a while, your engine is going to break down, and which is going to cost you maybe $8,000 or $10,000 a fix. So the same philosophy, and I believe fiscally responsible means we are addressing the maintenance, which is one of the major issues. And obviously, like I said, being a financial planner, I advise my clients how to use. And I don't think, when it comes to government, when it comes to school, when it comes to any institution, it is not any different. If you, most of the time, you use your money you have. And obviously, I'm a small business owner, so the same way we practice in our business, so the same issue, same way I'm going to work with the existing board, and you know, if I get elected, and work with people on the board, fiscally responsible, because we cannot run any business, we cannot run any business with the money you don't have. And it's very simple, and we wanted to use that money for better use, better future planning. And I believe we need to build new schools, and some of the schools are over capacity, we have 130%, and we need to address that issue. If we have to spend money on anything, I believe real estate and infrastructure is the place where we use our money. And that would be my priority, thank you.
You say that you lead with laser-focused financial oversight. If elected, what changes will you implement in being a board leader?
Okay, great question. First thing is, you've got to understand that the board is bombarded with the financial package from the administration that needs to be improved. And board members need to have the ability, as a team of seven, to decipher through the financials and what's happening to our school district on an independent basis. So immediately, one of the things that I, the skills that I possess, and I do it in private practice, and I do it in every organization I'm assisting, is take the very complicated and try to move towards the simple. I grew up in southwest Oklahoma, it could be a trillion on the map, but it wasn't worth talking about. So, the reality is, the financial package that's coming to the board right now is deficient. There's several things that bother me about it. One is that it doesn't tie to any financial statements. It's Excel spreadsheets. I experienced being in financial enterprises, whether it be little, big, or multi-billion dollar enterprises, if we have spreadsheets, they're run for air. So I think, you know, again, it's a team of seven, but the first thing they've got to be able to do is decipher the data that's coming at them. You've got to realize that a school district, even at a local level, is tugged and kicked and pulled from special interests in every conceivable manner possible. When a consultant tells you that you need 305 million in deferred maintenance, or a consultant tells you that you've got 15,000 students, you've got to rip apart that coming, you've got to rip apart that data and really understand, what is their motivation behind this? Is this real? Is it accurate? Or what's an interest they have? One of the things when you're running for school board is you have all these people come up to you and say, "What's in the best interest of the West Side? What are you going to do for the East Side?" You've got to move to a level where you can focus on the district that overall, and all 70,000 students, and financial statements lead you to the, thank you.
You have three children ranging in all three spectrums, and I said gifted, and I toyed with average so 5% regular. So I'll say gifted, regular, and a special needs child. You bring to the table a family that has experienced firsthand experience than compared to your two opponents. How will you make a better board member and leader, and what changes will you implement because of your personal experience?
Thank you for that question, I think it's a great question. I have worked in Fort Bend ISD for eight years as a volunteer, and I've acted in many capacities, including PTO president, starting fundraising programs, working at the district level, and my primary motivation has been to better education for all children in this district. My three children, we have specifically seen in the classrooms what curriculum things work and what curriculum things don't work. We have seen what instructional methodologies work and what instructional methodologies don't work. I have heard firsthand from teachers what supports they get in the classroom and what supports they don't get in the classroom. And so, over the eight years, I have seen in all aspects of education what things do work and what things don't work. In the last couple of years, we've had several audits in this district. We've had a curriculum audit, we've had a facilities audit, and we've had a TEA compliance review of special education. And I've participated in all three. And in that capacity, I have given my opinion about what things I think need to be changed. And as a board member, and I have reviewed those audits very carefully before I even threw my hat in the ring to run for school board. And what I want to do is bring to the board someone that has that experience and that knowledge and that can ask hard questions. If we're going to change curriculum, or implement new curriculum, or implement new instructional strategies, I can ask the hard questions that are content-based. I can ask hard questions about what supports are we actually going to give our teachers if we're going to implement new curriculum, because I know what teachers aren't getting right now. I can talk about behaviors in the classroom, because I've not only experienced them, I've spoken to teachers about it. These are questions, as a governing board member, that we're going to have to be asking our administrators in order to hold them accountable, that we are actually doing in the classroom what we say we're doing, and we're actually moving our district toward the betterment of education for all children.
As the daughter of a school board member, whether we like it or not, if you're an incumbent and you're failing, you are held at a higher level, and that's always my belief in being on panel. The incumbent is held at a higher level, so this question is to you. You say in your bio that you are poised and competent with the demonstrated ability to easily transcend culturally differences, have excellent team-building skills, and you've actively been serving the youth ministry of Sugar Creek Baptist as a seventh and eighth grade youth teacher. With what I had seen on, after the posting of KHOOT News Facebook timeline, in the response to an all-in ISD student were allegedly through a law lawyer teacher, you responded, "Get a rope." Has the Fort Bend ISD superintendent, the board president, or Sugar Creek Baptist asked for your resignation? And if not, why haven't you resigned? Secondly, what ethical behavior do you believe should occur before a board member should resign or be removed from the board?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that it's very important that people understand that when children in schools throw things at teachers and hit them in the face with them, they need to be held to a responsibility for their action. I think that's what we teach our children when they're little is, is when they do something wrong, there's consequences for doing that. So I make no apologies of any kind for what I said, okay? It was a little off-humor, but still, I simply do, it's very important that we understand, and there's board members here that don't agree, candidates that don't agree with our discipline policies, okay? But, here's the thing, there's consequences, every actions, there's reactions, okay? And I think it's very important that children understand that, and I don't think it's acceptable, under any circumstances, that children throw things at teachers. Now, some may feel that's okay, maybe they haven't been hit by a shoe in the face, okay? And they might feel a little differently if they had, okay? It's not a funny thing. So, when children throw things at teachers in schools, I take that to heart, I take that very seriously. I take that seriously is what you said about my integrity about the board, okay? Because it takes a bad integrity to stand up for teachers who deserve their rights just as much as anybody else does. And if you have more questions about that, I'd be glad, continue.
All indications are that within the next two years, Fort Bend ISD will ask voters to approve a mega-bond of several hundred million dollars. Please share with the audience your background, education, training, or experience that would be of benefit to the district as a trustee, considering the financial implications of such a large bond.
Okay. $700 million. They need $700 million in the next 10 years, I think it's five to 10 years if I'm not mistaken. Out of that, which, $300 million for the new schools, for big new schools, and then around $200 million is for the regular maintenance. And then some money that we have already been using it every year. I think the reason I'm explaining all this is, we need to understand the $700 million bond is not going to be here. They'll do the bond, but not $700 million. My parents, I manage, in our office, we have over 160 best management professionals. My team is responsible for managing billions of dollars.
Go ahead, can you close up in 10 seconds for management? You need 10 seconds.
Okay, I will do very good, in my setting the finances, I will ensure that the money is spent wisely.
I've worked in the financial services industry for the past 12 years. In fact, my day-to-day business is being a financial advisor. It doesn't take an expert to look at this and raise some eyebrows and really think about what's being proposed potentially. If elected, I'll look line through line and see what this money is to be spent. I initially would not approve it blindly. Understand that I will look line to line and see exactly what this bond was designed to be spent on and how it is being proposed. Thank you very much.
As you probably know, Common Core standards and CScope, a less-than-transparent curriculum, was banned in Texas during our last legislative session. And many states that had initially adopted these standards have since learned that they do not want Common Core and will now not implement in their state. However, there are reports that Common Core and CScope are both being implemented via other programs throughout our state, only with a different label. What is your opinion of the core standards and the effects these standards will have on our students in Texas? And if you are committed to the goal of making sure our kids are smarter and prepared for a successful future, what will you do to ensure that our school district does not implement Common Core or CScope or its principles, no matter what the label?
I need 15 minutes to answer this. So, very simple, you know, let me tell you this. I honestly believe, I believe in local decision, every school district is different. I don't know, you know, Fort Bend ISD is one of the most diverse school districts, maybe in the country. And when you go to some part of Texas, you may not see that diversity. So, there are needs, so much different, and also, our curriculum, I totally believe we have a lot of room for improvement, obviously. So, you know, there is college readiness, and we have a lot need to be done when it comes to preparing our children to go forward for a successful career. College readiness is a major issue, and when it comes to supporting a local, you know, main, sorry, a local manage or understanding, our children's need a curriculum, creating a curriculum, that kind of stuff, I support very much. Thank you.
I've already been pretty outspoken about this. Common Core and CScope is nothing but an indoctrination of our students, point-blank. Nobody in Austin or Austin should be telling us how we're going to educate our kids in our local community. That's why you have a school board. Our job is to sit there, and when our administrators and our teachers come forward with a curriculum, we need to look at that curriculum, make sure it meets what the community of Fort Bend ISD wants, and then we let them go forward. If it doesn't meet what the community wants, then we look at it and say, "This is not acceptable. Please go back and redo what's not available in this community." If you've been online, you've seen some references, some math questions that are out of Common Core, you've seen some statements that are made about our current president and other presidents, you've seen history changed in Common Core. That is the problem with Common Core and CScope. That's the reason why we have to bring back decisions to our local boards. That's why our legislators in Austin did House Bill 5 and said, "Look, we're going to allow our local school boards to decide the career and technical training of our students, and we need to continue to push for that."
How many times do you believe a teacher should be fired and rehired? And how do you justify the repeated rehiring of the same teacher as being fiscally responsible?
That's a good question. I would have to look at why the teacher was fired. I actually have personal experience with this, because we had a situation with a teacher, with one of my daughters, and that teacher was fired. And she was fired for reasons that she should not be ever rehired anywhere again. So I would have to look at specifically what the situation and circumstances are, but I would think that if conduct rises to the level of calling for dismissal of a teacher, that that would be enough in my mind to say that we should not rehire that teacher. But again, I would want to look at the specific circumstances. As far as firing and rehiring multiple times, maybe you get a one-time pass, but I can't imagine that you would get more than a one-time pass, and that would be my opinion on that.
All right, you say that you have raised teachers' salaries and want to restore fiscal restraint, so in essence, you are fiscally responsible. Do you know or can you educate us today on what the cost is to us, the taxpayers, when you hire, fire, rehire, fire, and again rehire a teacher? What is the severance that they receive and the actual cost to us as taxpayers? Can you help us out here?
Well, to my knowledge, Fort Bend doesn't hire, fire, and rehire teachers. But that is a function of the personnel department, which is a function of operations. As far as what I think they should do, I think if a teacher is not performing in the classroom to the standards that meets this district's standards, that meets the community's standards, then they are put on what's called a growth plan. And then if they don't meet the standards after a year, then they get fired. They either get on the bus, there's a spot for everybody on the bus, okay? But they either get on the bus or they get thrown. It's just that simple. And so, I don't believe in passing employees from one spot to another, from one teaching position to another position, or from one school to another, as has been done in the past in transfers, and I think that maybe what you're making reference to, the truth is, is that everybody has a place on the bus, they get on the bus, or they move on.
Well, again, it's kind of a blind question in that we don't have the facts and circumstances. I do think that, you know, we do have to allow our superintendent to run the schools, certainly when we have grievances or things that come to the board level, we certainly need to review them and have some oversight in that regard. I want to go back briefly, you know, this dialogue of bashing our students is going to get us nowhere. It's reflective of the heart. When you make comments like, "Get a rope," I will never, ever give up on a student, whether they're making bad decisions or not. My wife's been physically assaulted as a teacher, and I think we need to have clear boundaries for children. But leaders always have to model to students the opportunity and pathway to make good choices. And nobody gave up on me, I didn't assault any teachers, but I was not your foster child high school student, and nobody gave up on me, and I won't give up on these kids.
In Fort Bend ISD, we have different academies throughout the district that offer enrichment in specific areas. Hundreds of kids every school day board a bus to attend a school that they are not zoned to, costing the taxpayers millions of dollars in transportation costs. In addition, the academies' programs themselves cost the district millions of dollars. Many parents and taxpayers have spoken out against the academies because they feel that many students are leaving their zoned schools to attend a different school, removing some of the best and brightest students that could help raise the bar at the regularly zoned school. Finally, the question. First, do you support academies in Fort Bend ISD and wine? If not, why? And second, what certification, degree, or other benefit do these children and taxpayers receive for the millions of dollars being spent?
Yes, I support the academies. Let me tell you why. Before I say why, I would like to, I'd like the audience to know what the expenses are. The expenses to bus the children in a year, that is 2013 and '14, is $2.2 million. Out of $600 million budget. And we have been working with the superintendent, cutting down that cost to $1.2 million from next year onwards, because they are going to run the shuttle buses to their respective elementary schools. So every child goes to their respective elementary school, from there, they go to the academy school. So it's only $1.2 million. Instead of finding, for example, that I've got a chemistry teacher in every school, it is cheaper to bus everybody to one school.
That's the second part of that question. You said, "I got hung up on, do you support academies?" in the question, the answer is no to that, but what's the second part of that?
The end of the question is, what certification, degree, or other benefit do these children and taxpayers receive for the millions of dollars being spent on the academies?
I do not support academies, I do not know the second part of that question about what extra degrees they receive. I know they've been effective in some part, they are a small part of our district, but most importantly, we have students on the east and west side that are at 180% capacity. And we really need to take a look and see where we're spending our money and how we're spending our money, because most importantly, we have students that aren't receiving the correct type of education that they deserve. And serving on the board, given the opportunity, I am able to serve on the board, I will be a proponent for all students, not just academy students. As a taxpayer, I would like to see the effectiveness of these academies before going forward with any more money being spent on them.
You stated in your bio that you are committed to making safety and security in our schools your number-one priority. What changes would you make to the current Fort Bend ISD policies to ensure that our children are more safe and secure?
Well, this is a big issue in Fort Bend ISD. As many of you know from what's happened in other schools around the nation, one of the biggest issues we have is controlling who comes in and out of our schools. We have schools where doors are left unlocked and people can get in. We have schools that don't have festivals, so somebody can walk straight in the front door. We also have buildings that are used with keys. The problem with keys is, is when you lose them, we now have, somebody has access. And the district can't go re-key the whole building when a key's lost. So we need to go to a, we need to go to a card system where a card can be turned on or off on an instant. It can be tied to a student's ID, if a student needs to get in and out of the building, they can get in and out of the building. But there's other issues that we need to work on as well. There's safety issues in our school where maintenance has not been kept up and the safety of our students has been compromised, which is the reason this maintenance, getting it back up to where it needs to be, is so important.
Absolutely. Why should I say no to that answer? Because safety of our children, safety of our teachers, anyone who work in school is definitely a number-one priority. And I have noticed, being, you know, my wife is a teacher with Fort Bend ISD, and she also, many times, had situations like some schools, kids are required to wear a name tag or a card identifying themselves. Some schools don't have that, you know, that policy in place. And I make sure every school need to have that, because we don't know, usually the bad people, the bad guys, is going to pick good schools. So I believe safety and security has to be a number-one priority with so many measures we can go on. Due to lack of time, I'm not going to get into the details, but definitely it is number-one priority, yes.
Will you fight against tenure and eliminate it in our district? Do you believe in term limits for a board member, and if so, how many terms? And would you have supported and voted for the $18.2 million iPad program if you had been a board member?
Okay, I'm going to start backwards. Absolutely not. I was a community member that was against it and spoke out against it, and I would not have supported it. There were way too many other things we could have spent $18 million on. iPads are now sitting locked up, not being used at all. iPads are now sitting locked up, not being used at all. It was a complete waste of money. I do support term limits for board members. I think that it is important to allow for turnover, for fresh ideas, for new people to come in, especially as our children progress. I think we need to have more community involvement, and I do support term limits. I do think it's good to have board members that are helping to steer the direction of the community, as long as they're supported by the community for a certain number of terms, but there is a limit. What was the last question?
Tenure, will you fight to get rid of it in our county?
Yeah, I would fight to get rid of it because I do think it is important that we have teachers that are high quality, administrators that are high quality, and I don't think you should, we should keep them just because they've worked there a certain number of years.
Let's start with the 18 million, $18 million spent on iPads and assorted infrastructure. Again, that's getting back to getting laser-focused. We were wandering in the wilderness while we had a lull in the building season. We could have built some elementary school, an elementary school with that money, really could have had the ability to have the cats meow in terms of contracts. Instead, we got lost in the woods, and we started heading down roads and pathways, and now we've got need really hitting us in the face. With regards to tenure, no, I'm not a fan of that. I think that everyone has to have some accountability. I am in favor of making sure that we were fair to our teachers because that is our greatest asset, but I'm not in favor of tenure. In terms of term limits, yes, I believe we do need term limits. Off the top of my head, I would think three or four years, three or four terms, maybe even two, might be enough, although you want to have some continuity on the board.
Same question, and obviously, would you change your vote if you did it over again today on 18 million?
Well, I'd like, first, the iPads, the amount spent on iPads amounted to $12.5 million. $6 million of that was for infrastructure that was provided for in the 2007 bomb. 3.5 million of that was for the iPads, and 3.5 million was for programming. So in retrospect, just so separate the men from the boys, there was an effort by the board to examine this issue. The board had a really, really tough time with this because they didn't, weren't really sure of what was in front of us. So when we did pull it back down and we voted to possibly not do the iPad project, the board withdrew the motion unanimously and decided unanimously, as the board decided, to go ahead with the program. So the iPads, in theory, probably were a good, but we were lied to by the superintendent. You can't account for that. Tenure, there is no tenure in the state education system, period. Teachers are on a year-to-year contract.
More than 60% of students will leave high school and will be in the workforce within a few years without a college degree. First, do you believe that all students must have a college degree? Second, do you support vocational training in our high schools? Third, what would you do as a board of trustee to ensure our students are college and/or workforce-ready upon leaving high school?
Not every student is intended to go to college. I wholeheartedly believe that. There are several friends of mine growing up that were told, I guess, or expected to go to college, and they've ended up being business owners today in electrical business or plumbing business. So, no, I do not believe that. As far as career and technical training, we have, could you, tell me the second part of that question again? I'm sorry, that's a lot. I should have made notes.
That's okay. The second part is, do you support vocational training in our schools?
Absolutely, I support vocational training. I think it's important that we graduate students that are good taxpaying citizens. They need to be a good part of a, graduating from high school does not mean that you have to go to college, obviously. We need to graduate students so they can be trained to go to the workforce, so they can be taxpaying citizens, productive citizens in our society. Currently, we do not have the infrastructure in Fort Bend ISD to support these needs. We need to take a step back and look and see what we can do going forward so we can implement plans. As you know, House Bill 5 has been passed, and we are going to have to change not only our infrastructure, but we're going to have to change the way our educators view workforce-ready programs. Thank you.
Also, the vocational courses, I agree that we need to have vocational courses. I understand everyone doesn't need to graduate, but it really ties into the academies. We can have an academy that can specifically train in vocational courses and career technology courses so that they can go to workforce as soon as they graduate. These children are also like a special needs case, just like academy kids or higher-achieving kids, they have special needs. For example, just like I was telling, an organic chemistry example, maybe a multi-variable calculus. We cannot afford to have a teacher to teach multi-variable calculus in every school. So we can have one teacher at one place, the teacher can train and teach every student in that course. So academies are an integral part of all these schools, so vocational courses. We need to have special, okay, special classes to teach these children be ready for the jobs as soon as they graduate. That is what HP5 comes to a lot of help. Oh, I got two minutes, okay? The second question, I'm just thinking there. This is one of my campaign promises. We are going to have vocational courses in the schools that we are not using to the full potential. Fort Bend ISD's mission is to teach every child to their full potential, whether it's an academy kid, whether it's a kid who is not graduating for the knowledge.
What is your understanding and opinion on the growing mental health issues affecting our children and our community, the effects of drugs, illegal and legal? And what do you see your role as a board member is in helping to address and confront this issue within Fort Bend ISD? What do you see as the most contributing factor to this growing crisis?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have one request before I get into that question. I'd like to answer that academies question you asked, if you get an opportunity, because I really would like to, because I don't want the audience going on thinking whatever you heard is the last word about academies.
Well, actually, we can maybe tag at the end.
Yeah, if you could, I agree, I appreciate it. I'd like to answer that question. Okay. Coming back to, when it comes to community, and I understand, you know, I don't know how much it is a problem in Fort Bend ISD. I don't know honestly, but I'm sure as a society, we do have that issue, you know, drug-related problems, you know, broken families and that. And I think I will go back to the community, I will go back to our churches or church leaders and society leaders, community leaders, to coordinate a correlation between, you know, families and, you know. One of the biggest things I have noticed, one of the big problems, even when it comes to accomplishing and success when it comes to children, one of the major problems is a lack of parent support and lack of parent's involvement. My wife always said, if I could get 24 of my kids' parents come and say, whatever it takes, I want my child to be successful, she said I could make every child a fluffy straighter student, you know. And talk to any teacher, they always say that. And I believe, working with the community, working with the community leaders to address that issue, and I don't know, and I will definitely get involved, and, you know, especially when it comes to low-performing schools, and there are drug problems in low-performing schools, and I will go to bad schools, and I will, as a board member, along with the help of other members, and I would try to create some kind of a community coalition where we can address that issue. Because I don't think community, without community involvement and without parent involvement, that issue is not going to be solved.
Mental health is a big issue in education, period. We've got a problem across the country, and it really boils down to is, we have these kids, when they come into the school, we have the opportunity to provide mental health services to them. We don't know what baggage they're coming to that school with. We don't know if their parents fight at night. We don't know if they get abused at home. We don't know if they're eating a meal at home. We don't know if they're living underneath the bridge. We really need to get involved in mental health, and unfortunately, I was talking with Betty at Oregon Community College just last night, and one of the things that we talked about is if we don't get involved when their kids have mental health, when they leave that school and they haven't had any mental health treatment, you'll see them again, but you'll see them in the prison system where it costs a lot more to take care of that mental health issue. Dealing with the drug use, we've got a significant problem. I became aware that in two of our schools, we had undercover DEA agents actually making buys in our schools, and I had the unfortunate opportunity of having a parent that approached me, and his daughter was arrested for selling drugs in Fort Bend ISD. It is a big problem. We can't run from it, we can't hide from it. And for those of you that think it's just an east-side problem, it's really not. It's a problem in our higher-end schools where they have a lot of money and they have a lot of time, and we've got to deal with it, and that ties hand-in-hand with mental health, because one of the things these kids are selling is these narcotic drugs that they're taking for ADHD. And the schools have become big pushers of drugs for ADHD students, and it's getting abused significantly. So we need to get involved in mental health. Now, the flip side of that, it does cost money. It is an investment in our students, but it's a much better investment when we're doing it ahead of time with our kids than waiting and reacting when they're in a jail cell and we have to keep them locked up because they can't operate in society. And that's a better on our part. We need to stop it in the schools. We need to make mental health a priority, and we need to engage the community in that same process and stop having people run from the issue.
What is your understanding of the growing mental illness crisis in our community, combined with drug use and the games our middle school and high schoolers are playing, and the enormous damage social media is playing? And what is your role in helping on that front for our families and our community?
Well, let me address this first again. Mental health-wise, we spend a ton of money in our budget every year on special education. Some of that's related to mental health, okay? As far as drugs and social media, those are really two separate issues. The drugs are a problem, they're not just a problem in Fort Bend County, they're not just a problem in Houston, they're not just a problem in Texas, they're a problem all over the country. And kids are selling Adderall, and they're selling all kinds of stuff, and the most dangerous and the biggest pusher that they're buying from is their parents' medicine cabinet. And that's a real social problem. Social media is how some of this gets promoted. So our kids have, can't live without, five minutes without an iPhone or an iPad or some sort of social device. So it's more prevalent now than it's ever been. Now, the way, in schools, as far as the way the school district approaches it, is the access that they can have to the internet at schools is limited through filters. So the social media problem doesn't actually come into the school, other than what goes on outside the school affects what goes on inside the school. I.e., they plan activities outside the school that maybe there's going to be a fight the next day, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's texted to all the friends. But that's a problem. We have an excellent police department, we have an excellent special education department. That's things that they work on, that they're aware about. Common, who is our student services director, works on these types of issues every day of the week, and so it's a big deal for them, and it's something that we're always working on.
What is your understanding of the growing mental illness crisis in our community, combined with drug use and the games our middle and high schoolers are playing, and the serious damage social media is playing? And what is your role in helping our children and our community?
I assume you mean as a board member. Right. As far as mental health, I'm well aware of it. I lost a good friend of mine, what's, three years ago, to mental health, committed suicide. So we really do have a problem. I think one of the things that we do is try to increase the education and make sure that our, as a school district, we are using and integrating the resources we already have in place in this county to help with that. As far as social media, one of the problems we have is some bullying that goes on in social media, and that contributes to the problem. What I have found that's best to work is to, you know, we've implemented the anti-bullying policy for the school district, and it's nearly impossible for them to try to police it. What we really need to do is develop programs where the parents can opt in to where, when you get two parents involved, then it stops. And that's the success I've found, because there is a lot of Mean Girl activity that goes on, or Mean Boy, or whatever, on social media, that really the schools are just not equipped to try to police it all. But when we get the parents involved on both ends of that, that stops. With regards to drugs, again, one of the things we've got to do, and our legislature's working hard, we've got to expand opportunities for our kids and indicate them that there are pathways to a future. We're waterboarding these kids largely with a one-size-fits-all educational model, and they're turning to alternatives to escape. And we've got to make sure that they know there's a future for them in this society, and we're going to help them get the skills that they need to embrace our Texas economy and become, move from dependence to independence. And they need not just hope, but really a plan of action, and we can give that to them. Thank you.
The first thing I want to do is dispel this misconception that special education and mental health are the same thing. While mental health and special education do have some overlap, they are not the same thing. In fact, Fort Bend ISD, in many cases, over-identifies kids because they have mental health issues, and they place them in special education classes where they give resources that are irrelevant to the mental health issues that they have. And so what we need to do as a board is we need to make sure that we have services and resources in place that are actually addressing the mental health issues, instead of over-identifying our kids and paying more money by putting them in special education. So that's going to help our budget, and it's going to help our kids. We can go out into the communities, and there are resources that we can use that will cost us a lot less and help us to save in our budget by bringing these resources into the school. And there are people out there willing and ready to help, we just haven't tapped into them. And as a board member, I think it's our responsibility to go out and tap into those resources so that we can bring them in for our kids and our teachers. We're not equipping teachers to handle this, we're not training them on the mental health issues that we have going on, and that's completely different than training them on disability. And we've got to step up and start having meaningful staff development in this area. We also can partner with the juvenile justice system, and I've spoken with Judge Elliott about that. He's got a mental health court, and we can get a better understanding, and we can partner with him and see what things he's seeing out there and how we can tap into it in our school systems. The other thing, social media. So I think this is a big issue, and there is social bullying, and this happens a lot with our kids with disabilities and without disabilities. And our administrators' hands are tied a lot of times in being able to handle these issues because they act like it's outside of the schools. Well, folks, it's not outside of the schools. There are devices, there are phones, there are all kinds of things going into our school every day, and our kids are tapping into this, and they're doing it in the schools. And we need to have district policy that allows our administrations and our teachers to deal with this, instead of just saying, well, it's the parents' responsibility and I can't do anything about it.
Basically, we've had a really big problem going on in the district with a lot of rezoning, people being moved all around. It's been very contentious. With the talk of mega bonds, the need to build new schools, and the necessary rezoning that will take place during all of the reworking of the district facilities, what will you do to mitigate the negativity surrounding this issue?
I think you're talking about the, basically, this management plan. I've been part of this steering committee ever since it was started. For the last six months, I have been in there. I've been a leading steering committee, I have been a part of it in there. Because of the growth of the district and the change of the district, we do really need to build new schools, and we may have to resort, or we may have to, I think, propose that we need to add new classrooms, we need, we need to add new classrooms, and then we probably need to, especially, especially overcrowding is happening in elementary schools. I do not see any overcrowding in the high schools. Based on the information given, all the high schools are up to 90% full.
I've been involved in the district-wide planning committee as well, and really, this is a result of no long-term planning previously. So I can understand why a lot of folks are upset. They buy a house in our district, they expect something that they've been told that they were going to happen, and then when their kid gets to the school, something else changes. So as a board member, I will support a long-term plan. That does not mean that the plan that has been suggested, I will approve every piece and part of it. Like I said before, when we're talking about mega bonds and talk about money and taxes, we have to go line for line and look at exactly what they're wanting to spend money on. Are these things that Are these things that, what they're spending on, are they computers? Are they facilities? We've got to stop financing things that we should pay more upfront. Thank you.
This is a two-part question. First, what is your understanding and opinion of the anti-bullying campaign in our schools? And do you know how Fort Bend ISD defines bullying? And secondly, what is your opinion of the zero tolerance approach to consequences?
The problem is real simple in Fort Bend ISD. We have a policy we don't enforce. My daughter suffered from bullying so bad that for the last three years, my wife and myself have had to drive her to another school and pick her up every day while the individuals that bullied her remained at the school. And they get a bus ride. And they get all kinds of privileges that my daughter doesn't get. My daughter has to go visit a psychiatrist because of what happened during bullying. It's because of this district didn't enforce its policies. It is a huge problem. It happens on this board. If you watch those board meeting videos, you will see a board member bully another board member. There has been nothing done about it. We are modeling behavior that we should not be modeling. And we should be giving our students something they can take back. Not a zero tolerance, but a hand on the back that says, "Look, it's okay. We know you have some problems, but this is not the way to handle it. Don't act out. Come to me when you have a problem. Let's talk through it." Bullying is associated with mental health.
I had the privilege to attend or be a coordinator, facilitator for the diversity conference at Fort Bend ISD a couple of weeks ago. And I got an opportunity to interact. One of the subjects they were talking about was bullying in school. And I personally never experienced anything with my children, but I come to realize it is a major issue. It is absolutely a major issue. And I grew up in a very different culture where this kind of stuff are not tolerated. Okay? And of course, we live in a culture where these things happen on a daily basis. I believe these need to be addressed. And Chris mentioned that it has not been enforced. And also, we all know that bullying is going on at every level. Why we talk about children? Even among adult level, this bullying is going on. So obviously, kids are learning from our adult population also. So I believe in addressing that. I believe in even zero tolerance to that bullying situation. Thank you.
In a prior election, when it was disclosed that all, we're talking about truancy and legalization of marijuana. In a prior election, when it was disclosed that all the truancy cases were being removed from the JP court and pushed into the truancy court. And the conclusion was that it was simply because it was a moneymaker for the community and it wasn't solving the truancy issue. What is your role in changing this? How would you lead as a board member? And what is your personal opinion on legalization of marijuana and we become another California Colorado?
Okay. Let me take care of the legalization of marijuana. I'm not in support of that in any form or fashion, okay? Let people move to Colorado if they want to participate in that. With regards to the truancy court, I've been involved as a citizen, working to improve some of the negative attributes the truancy court's been throwing off. We phalanged up an automated system. And we threw it into the truancy court, which we're trying to model after Dallas County. The problem with it is, we've got a lot of students over there that shouldn't be in that court. We've removed the human touch out of it. And so my role has been down there, helping to identify the problems. I've given that to the administration. It is on the board agenda. The administration's reviewing it. And I was intimately involved in helping identify those issues. We want to have a good program, but we don't want to certainly throw off some of the attributes that are there. I think we've got a good overall program, but we've got to clean that up. So we're not working on that.
Actually, in regards to marijuana, the dirt is for dirt. Okay? That's all I have to say to that. As far as the truancy issue, here's the way it is, okay? Fort Bend has a sound, solid truancy policy. It couldn't be any more clear. It couldn't be any more concise than what it is. As a matter of fact, it's so concise that sometimes when you read Chief Rider's chart, you can get confused looking at it. So the truancy court was invented to take the load off of the JP courts. It wasn't invented to make money for anybody. It was invented to take the load off of JP courts because the JPs were complaining that they couldn't get their business done because they were spending so much time with kids that couldn't come to school. And it's responsibility of the parents to make sure their kids get to school. And when they don't get to school, they don't get to learn, okay? So it's very important that they come to school. So thank you very much.
I'm absolutely opposed to legalization of marijuana for many reasons, not the least of which that it leads to mental health issues. So I'm opposed to that. While we may have a very clear and concise truancy policy, I think it's like a zero tolerance policy. And I think what we're not looking at is the students that are being caught up in that that shouldn't necessarily be caught up in that. Truancy is a gateway crime. And so 90% of those that are incarcerated started with truancy. And so I do think it's something that we need to address. But I think part of the way of addressing that is getting parental involvement. The first thing that that's going to do is help those that are not getting to school that should be getting to school and are just skipping school. And the second thing that's going to help is that, you know, there are times when our kids miss school and they do gain educational benefits. And so I think we need to move away from the zero tolerance and maybe do it on a case-by-case basis and make sure that we don't have kids missing school to go to truancy court in order to address some of the truancy issues.
Okay, now we're going to get to the questions from the audience. These will be one-minute answers. Now, I'm going to do this random link, begin at the far end and come back this way. And then I'll break it apart for every question. So starting with Darren, how would you justify shutting down taxpayer support for academies that help higher achieving students while asking for taxpayer support for career education for children who choose not to complete school curriculum?
Well, it's kind of a little bit of a loaded question. I'm going to stand up since we're having audience involvement. Look, we've got to get the academies ring fenced into the college and career initiative. That's what the state, the legislature's given us that rope to do that. It was part of them lowering the testing for our students from 15 down to 5. The legislature's taken the lead on this. And so we've got to get the academies inside of our programs with college and career. And how does that look? Doesn't it look like college credit? Our kids, it's a hot pot system of college credit and activities out there. They're very difficult for kids to find what's available to them. And then national certifications. An adjacent school district, you can get an associate's degree for $5,000 or you can get up to 25 national certifications the same time you walk across the stage or lost or way behind. Thank you.
How do you justify shutting down taxpayer support for academies that help higher achieving students but asking for taxpayer support for career education for those that choose not to complete student curriculum?
So that's, I don't support shutting down academies per se. So I guess that assumes that we support shutting down academies. I'm in favor of programming that's going to help students get college-ready or career-ready. So I support both. I think that we have students that have individual abilities and that we need to tap into those individual abilities. And we need to make sure that we offer programs that are broad enough to allow students who want to be on a career path to be on a career path and who want to be on a college path to be on a college path. I think the curriculum and the programming that's involved in the academies is very good. I think it does this. Fiscally, I'm not sure it's fiscally sound. I don't know because I haven't been on the inside to see that. But I do think the programming is good. But I think we don't do a good job of getting our kids career-ready. And I think that that is an area that we can expand on and need to expand on in order to open doors of opportunity for all kids in this district.
I think one of the challenges that we have to deal with as we move forward is how do we expand the academy programs, not tighten them down? How do we expand them and integrate them with the career technology program so that our kids all have an opportunity to learn in different ways? For example, our medical profession is being supplemented by our academy over at High Tower High School. So some of the academies are actually part of the career and technical education program right now. So I'm not for cutting any funding to any academy programs. We need to find ways to make the ones that work work and the ones that don't work, get rid of them. So what we need to do is streamline and then mainline. And that's going to take some work. And as a matter of fact, Dr. Dupree is actually scheduling workshops for the board now and working on that very issue so that we can improve our academy program and integrate it with the career and technology program.
I was thinking, I'm not going to get any academy-related question. Finally, I got one. Let me tell you this. I see there's a lot of anti-academy sentiments in this room. And I believe it is completely wrong. And I honestly believe, this is the way to look at it. My son doesn't attend, he's not a football player, he's not a basketball player, my daughter is not a cheerleader. That doesn't mean we don't need that program. Because I don't like it. That doesn't mean, that's the same way I feel about it. I have three children attending academy programs. And I could tell, that's why I said I wanted to answer this question very badly because my son is, you know, graduated from, you know, High Tower High School Medical Academy. And he graduated number five and moved on to UT Dallas with a full ride. One of the reasons he is where he is because of the academy. That's where he realized, I can talk about, that's where he realized that he wanted to be a cardiologist because he was able to work with some renowned cardiologists in the Huguenot area. That's the reason why he got that experience. And I will come back and answer this more about academies. Thank you for this hour.
One of the biggest things about the academies and career and technical that everybody gets confused is that they're two separate programs. They really aren't one and the same. Academies are just a different way of naming a career and technical. We have a medical academy. We have a media academy. We have a science academy. The problem with the academies is they've created an elitist type of mentality in our district. Certain kids can get in. Certain kids can't. We also only offer certain classes to academy students and we don't offer it to other students. Even though they may be qualified, they may want to take the class. And they may actually be smarter than the student in the academy, but they can't attend because they're not in the academy. The other problem is, is that we set the system up very poorly. And why I say that, if you look at Clements, you have a counselor that's providing services to 139 students while you have another counselor that's providing services to 1,800 students. That's a problem. And it's not a problem with the academy. It's a problem with how the system was put into place. So when we start to look at career technical, we need to look at all the academies, everything, and put them into one program.
We really have to take a look at the effectiveness of the academies. To my knowledge, I believe Dr. Dupree is actually getting together a task force that's going to look at our academy and see how effective they are. I'm going to tell you a personal story here. Honestly, when I was in high school, I didn't really know what I wanted to do. Maybe I wanted to be a welder or a plumber, electrician. I didn't know. But if we have an effective program that is workforce training, maybe some of these kids that don't want to finish their curriculum might be excited about finishing it. If I had, who's to know what my path may have been? But if someone said, "You know what, Jason? You can be a welder. You can make $150,000 a year." Well, you know what? I might get excited about school. So having the availability of all students going to some type of career-ready training may excite them to want to finish school. Thank you.
I would appreciate that. I think it's a part of academies. I can take that for a problem. The academies are an integral part of the schools. Academies are serving a lot of purpose. They are working very well. They are not broken. So we do not have to fix it. But we have to tweak here and there to avoid some of the problems. Thanks to the academy, my son is here in Montana, California, representing Fort Bend ISD. And thanks to academies, my daughter, I just heard the news today, she goes to Upland Valley GT Academy. Her team is the first place winner in the state future problem solving. And she's going to Ohio for the national finals, Southern Iowa. So the academies are a great additions to the Fort Bend Academy.
Does Fort Bend Independent School District have the International Baccalaureate Program? If so, do you approve or disapprove?
The International Baccalaureate Program?
Yes.
To my knowledge, they do not have the International Baccalaureate Program. And I'm not sure, it's going to be very difficult for me to answer that because I'm not sure if it's something that we offer. What I do approve of is having everything presented to us as a district. It's going to be the administration's job to decide how to manage the district. And so I'm in favor of considering all programs that would offer avenues for our students to have better education and to get on paths that they choose for themselves. I'm a big supporter of student choice when it comes to where they want their futures to be. And so I think that it is important for us to consider all avenues for them to get there.
Well, actually, Chris and I could help you out. We did have an IBC academy. And what it did originated in Missouri City Middle School, fed into Third Grade Marshall High School. What happened to the program was is we didn't have enough participation in it to keep the academy rolling. When you don't have enough kids coming from the middle school to feed the high school, then the program dies. And when you're spending over a million dollars a year on the program, you want to make sure that you, as the taxpayers, are getting your money for it. And that wasn't happening. So the board had to shut that down.
I think Bruce already answered. I mean, something didn't work, they already got rid of it. So I don't know why even we should talk about it. And I'm all for, you know, if some program not working, you know, just get rid of it. In any business, you know, as a small business owner, if I spend money on something, if it doesn't work, I'm not going to go back and spend money on it again. That is, I think it's a common sense thing. So if it's already failed, there is no reason to support a program like that. Thank you.
What the IBC program pointed out in this community was, is that people have a problem with going to certain schools. People didn't want to go to Missouri City Middle School. And they didn't want to go to Marshall High School. And the reality is, it's because of the reputation of those schools. Why do those schools have a bad reputation? Because the administration in the district did a poor job of maintaining teachers in those schools, maintaining strong administrators, and keeping the opinion of those schools up in the community. And when you allow a community to believe that a school is just not worth saving, you've done a problem. You've done a disservice to the students that have to attend those schools if they're zoned to it. But then to try to put a program into that school and say, "Oh, look, it failed." Well, no kidding. It's going to fail because nobody wants to go to those schools. It identifies an underlying problem that we need to work on. And that is, we need to provide the same classes, the same services, the same support at every school, whether it's in Area A, Area B, or in Area C, so that all our students have the same opportunities.
I am familiar with the IBC program that we do not have anymore. I'm going to agree with Chris here. Whatever we do in our district, we have to do district-wide. I think Fort Bend ISD has failed in several aspects as far as making district-wide policy. We owe it to our taxpayers. We owe it to our students. And we owe it to our schools. Thank you.
I think the program, IP program, is an excellent program. It has failed because lack of support. I had a personal experience about the program here. Then there was an expo for the programs. Every coordinator was there recruiting the children. The coordinators going to each and every school recruiting the kids. But IP program coordinator was nowhere to be seen. I asked the same question to the administrator. Why the coordinator is not at the expo? Why this coordinator is not going into school to school and recruiting the children? I think the program is a great program. There was nobody who takes the responsibility to promote that program. When we start a program, we need to have somebody that has the responsibility to implement it.
It sounds like it was a program that fell by the wayside. I won't spend a lot of time doing on it. What we really need to focus on, and I'm not anti-academy. I'm not pro-academy. I'm just for students, okay? Our legislature has defined for us the things they're looking for: certifications and college. Did you know this community is fully empowered at the board level to implement any curriculum that is community-based, that leads to jobs, and leads to certifications? And so we've got to get on with this. Instead of this pro-academy, anti-academy, I like what the academy has in that it's trying to captivate students' needs, I mean, interests, and plant seeds. But let's get on with this. Our legislature wants certification or college. The other stuff has got to fit inside of those programs. And so we've got a lot of work to do as a community to get that done and get more in tune with what our legislature has asked for us to do as part of its reforms for the broader educational model.
So starting with position one, I've heard a lot about activism, but the job of the board is not to make policy, but to make sure the superintendent carries out board vision in a cost-effective manner. Could you provide the leadership needed without getting into the weeds?
Absolutely. Our job is to, the superintendent's job is to run our district from day to day. The board is designed to have different people from different backgrounds with different ideas to work together so that we can support our superintendent. Thank you.
The board is totally responsible. The board, board has only three duties. The board set the policies and the guidance to the superintendent. Superintendent's responsibility is to administer those things. The superintendent is accountable to the board. The board can veto the superintendent and punish the superintendent. The second, the third responsibility of the board is to, is to budget. For the budget, make sure the money is allocated for each and every program. The ISD's goal is set.
This is for position five. Would you be for teachers carrying concealed handguns if they had CHL and received special training from law enforcement?
This is a hard question and I will tell you why. I spent six years in the military, I served in two tours of combat, I'm a decorated disabled vet. It is hard to identify the enemy. And let me tell you what happens when a gunman comes into a school. He's not coming in there to say, make friends. He's coming in there to kill other people and he's coming in there to die. And when that police officer shows up from Fort Bend ISD or from the sheriff's department, they don't know who the shooter is and they don't know how to identify him. So anybody that's got a gun is now a target. I don't want to have to be the guy that sits there with Chief Rider when he goes to the kids and tells them that we accidentally killed your teacher because they pulled out a gun. I also don't want to be the, the board member that has to go to a parent and say that a teacher fired somebody and killed your student. That's a major problem. There's too many risks with having teachers with guns. With that being said, I think we do need to put officers from Fort Bend ISD in our elementary schools.
Thank you. This is actually a question very interesting. And I asked, I heard people talking about it, I talked to my wife about it, what do you feel about it? She said, I'm a teacher, I teach. And, and that's what I'm, I, that's what I know and that's what I know the best, that's what I do. And she said, the last thing I wanted to worry about, you know, I deal with a bunch of kids, some of them are good, some of them are maybe, you know, I'm not saying bad, but you know, they're not listening or whatever. Then I want, I gotta worry about, where's my gun is that, what happened to it? And you know, absolutely, I don't support, I've talked to a teacher, what he or she feel about it. I can almost guarantee ninety, more than ninety percent of the teachers are going to say they don't want to carry or they don't want to be responsible about a gun. And I'm against that. I think we need to have more police officers, you know, in our campuses and we need to have more law enforcement, they know what to do with guns and they know how to handle this situation. I totally against, uh, arming teachers with guns. Thank you.
Next question is for position four. In the past, it seems that the board of trustees have rubber stamped administrators' requests for programs. I for one, not me, I for one object to, they're out there. Object to most of the programs as they are extra educational or not educational. What do you think? Begin with Bruce.
It's kind of hard to answer that without knowing exactly what program we're talking about. But, um, I, I, I'll just say this. Whatever comes before the board, the board has to look at it as board. There's seven members. Um, the, we have workshop sessions and, and there are public meetings, anybody can come. Uh, when these items are brought before the board for discussion, it's, uh, there's even time for the audience to, uh, put in their comments at these workshops. So, uh, as things come up, if you have concerns about it, the time to let the board know is when we have the workshop about that. And then we, then the community has their input into it and we're open to listen to that. And other than that, then, you know, the board has to pretty much go with the information that they're presented with. That's what the responsi- the responsibility of administration is, is to provide us with good information to make good decisions.
I think the breadth of fresh air this past year has been, uh, the transparency and community involvement that we've had. And, um, I, I think as board members, we, it is not our role to rubber stamp what the administration brings before us, but to look at it objectively and to look at it with the help of community input. Uh, the last processes that have gone on this past year have been to allow community involvement, to allow teacher involvement, um, to allow parents to get involved. And I think as parents, we should be involved, especially in the curriculum and programming that's, uh, that's going to be before our children in the classroom. And so it would be my goal as a board member and hopefully the administration will continue to allow that community involvement, that parent involvement, for us to look at all sides of it and then determine what's best for all students, uh, in the district. And so in order to do that, we can't be a rubber stamp. And I think, uh, when we have board, board members that just rubber stamp whatever the administration puts in front of them, I think that's how we got in the position we're in right now.
I mean, certainly we've gone on a journey and, and circled back and picked up the community or have driven the car back around and tried to pick the community back up. And I do think that, you know, this concept of rubber stamping, we've kind of moved beyond that. I, I think it's important that we understand that as a board member, we're not professional educators too. So there is a line there, um, in terms of getting down in the weeds. And I'm gonna tackle that question that was polarizing last, last one. I'm not in favor of empowering teachers with firearms. I think, gosh, my wife, she wouldn't know what to do with a firearm. But I am for, uh, pushing our, working with our chief to make sure that we have the ability to defend teachers in the classroom. And I think some of that may be involved with having some administrators having the ability to carry in certain limited situations with appropriate training, like a police officer, because these are soft targets, these people know they're soft targets and they're coming in here to kill people.
To position five. Based, based on the FBI ISD Financial Committee recommendations?
Five.
Five. Let me jump around. Based on the Financial Committee recommendations, what is your opinion on tax dollars being used for a pre-K program?
This is a hard question to answer. I attended a children-at-risk seminar and one of the things that we know is, is that students that go through a pre-K program, especially coming from Title I school and lower income, tend to do better than students that don't get pre-K. That being said, it's a very expensive program. Uh, we only currently do it as a half-day and a lot of professional educators say it need to be, it needs to be a full day. But beyond that, it's not the job of the school district to babysit our kids. I know we've gotten into this mindset where we send our kids off to school so we can go off to a job, but that's not what schools are designed for. They're designed for education. And so we need to get our kids, and it was said to me by somebody after our last forum that I made, and she's, she's right. When a kid's four years old, they really should be with a family member, learning, being read to, learning from that family member, not from a teacher in a classroom with thirty other kids. And that's what we need to give back to is that parental involvement.
See, I have a very different perspective about, um, pre-K program. And I grew up in a culture or, or a, or a place where kids go to school when they turn three. And you know what, those kids are, you know, education, you know that it is building blocks, you just continue to, continue to, you know, build that foundation. And I believe it is absolutely, if, if the fund is available. Obviously, it all come down to, you know, if, if there is money available. If there is money available, if it is viable. And I support a pre-K program. I think it is all about, you know, starting early and they're going to learn better. And I talk to teachers about it, what they feel. Most of the teachers I talk to, they all feel, they all feel and support a pre-K program. And I'm for it if the resources are available. Thank you.
For position one. It's a long question. There's a big disparity in student performance between schools. Underperforming schools and students must be addressed, but not at the expense of higher performing students. My kids are not allowed, again, not my kids, my kids are not allowed to learn at their low. Teachers readily admit the work is too easy for them, but they have to do more of the same busy work. What can be done to allow all students to reach their potential?
The new HSP program allows the children to choose their own path according to their standards and capabilities. I think it is, it is the parents' duty and also the counselors who are assigning the classes to those children. It is very important which class they need to go through. The child who is not passing Algebra I cannot study Algebra II. So they need to be prerequisite to go into the next class. Just like if somebody wants to take a chemistry class, their prerequisite is biology. They need to pass the biology to go into chemistry. So you cannot afford the course of chemistry to everybody who wants to take it, but they need to have prerequisites. So...
Having taught in a third grade classroom before, the most important thing a teacher can do is engage their students. I had students that were, uh, below level, I had students that were above level, but regardless of the lesson that I taught, I was able to engage all students. And, and that takes, uh, not, I'm not saying every teacher has the ability to do that, but you really have to work hard and I know teachers work extremely hard, but we have to really press the fact that we have to engage all of our students. If we engage all of our students, I could teach a student on a lesson of, uh, I used to turn off my class every week on, uh, what I did for the weekend. And I engage those, and some of those students didn't have any idea of, uh, once again, we said earlier, we don't know what their, their home life is like. Most of the time, parents don't even engage their students. So if you truly engage your students, they can learn from any type of a lesson. Thank you.
Position four. Spanish speakers are taught in Spanish from grades K through five, but all other non-English speakers are taught in English. Is this a district or a state policy? And would you change this so all students are taught in English?
Well, I'm not sure on the mechanics of when the, when the requirements kick in, because there, there is some ESL requirements. But I guess my goal with all that is, let's, let's try to transition to the language that we have here in this country. Um, because that'll serve them best. Certainly when they're, they come into the school system and all they can speak is, is a different language, we need to do everything we can to try to bridge that gap and get them back in, into, uh, the ability to absorb our English culture. And that'll serve them well into life and so that's my response. Thank you.
I would agree with that. I was PTO president for three years at a Title I school and we have, have a lot of English language learners in our school. And, um, I actually was surprised when I walked into the classroom, the EOL classroom one day and heard the teaching going on in Spanish, uh, because I didn't realize that that, that that was the, the policy. Um, and I asked teachers why that happened and shouldn't we be transitioning them more, uh, to English at an earlier age? And actually, the response from the teachers was that that would be their desire to be able to do that. Um, so I agree that I think we need to start at an earlier age, getting kids transitioned to English, to the native language here. Um, I agree that that's something that needs to happen probably earlier than we are doing it. Uh, because I know a lot of kids have a, a hard time transitioning, transitioning into middle school if they don't go in, uh, with a strong foundation in the English language.
Actually, the state does have a concise policy concerning transitioning kids from English to Spanish or Spanish to English. Uh, they transition, uh, assuming they came in in the first grade or kindergarten, by the time they end fifth grade, where they're supposed to be handed, transitioned out. Now, where the problem arises with Fort Bend or any other school district is, is sometimes we don't get them until they're in the fifth grade. Well, it's kind of hard to transition them from another language, uh, in, into the sixth grade and they, and they fully understand English. So it makes some problems and it makes some additional efforts necessary to get them up to speed because sometimes it's not possible to get them fully transitioned by the time that they're out of fifth grade. But that is what the state objective and that is Fort Bend's objective.
This has to do with the vetting process for superintendent? In the past, we've given lucrative contracts to superintendents and then halfway through the contract, we've had to buy out the individual. What are we doing now or what can be done to prevent this?
So is that mean to say, you know, once we give the contract to superintendent and then, then they changed it in the middle of?
I'm assuming that it refers to doing a better process of vetting a superintendent so we don't have to remove them or ask them to leave halfway through their contract?
And obviously, and I, I strongly believe it is, you know, selecting and giving contract to superintendent is one of the most important, uh, process because we have went through one just now. And, uh, and we have this issue, um, selecting the right person and giving, uh, a contract for, I believe it should be, it's given maybe two years or whatever that term is, and I believe it is continued to stay that.
I think you have to understand how we got here. We publicly fired a superintendent at a board meeting. Nobody wants to be a superintendent of Fort Bend ISD. The only way we get a superintendent is we have to pull out our pocketbook and we have to pull out a whole lot of cash. And the only way to fix that problem is get a united board that backs that superintendent so he can do a ten-year run in this district. The teachers know him, the board knows him, the community knows him, and we get a great school because of it.
All right, thirty-second closing statement.
Thirty seconds.
Everybody. All right, begin.
If elected, my priorities are to attract, retain, and recruit highly, highly qualified teachers through collaborative relationships with universities and workforce-ready agencies. Fixable resource responsibility, continuous improvement of processes to protect our taxpayer dollar in safe and secure schools, systematic approach district-wide to enhance security for staff and students. If you'd like to know more about me, please visit my campaign website at www.jasonburden.com. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. One, excellence in education, excellence in education. Number two, safe, unsecured environment for the parents, for the students, and the teachers. Excellent responsibility is my top priority. And the fourth priority is community involvement. I will have sound goals to understand the community needs and take the decisions with some input from the community and make decisions that are, over. Thank you.
How long do I have? Four minutes?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Okay. You got a lot of choices. You gotta make a tenth. Um, if you elect, if you vote for me, I mean, essentially what I'm trying to do is get on the board and make sure that we're good stewards with what we've been entrusted. And make sure that we build trust because trust with the taxpayer is absolutely critical to meet student need. If we will never be able to meet student need if we don't have taxpayer trust. Secondly, we need, I'm wanting to help to move the needle as a business person to help empower our community to give these kids real opportunities while they leave our system. Thank you.
Eighteen years of experience as an attorney, eighteen years of experience as a small business owner, and eight years of experience as a district fighting for students and fighting for teachers. And that's what qualifies me. I've spent eight years in this district working in the classrooms, working for students and students are gonna be my number one priority. It's also gonna be a priority for me to go in and make sure that our teachers are taken care of and find creative ways to support the administration in getting parents involved. It's the number one common denominator across this country in student success, is parental involvement.
Three years ago, this thing, I heard you say you didn't want any new taxes. We don't have any new taxes in three years. Three years ago, you said you wanted new administration, we gave you an administration. Three years ago, you said you wanted to cut debt. We've cut bond debt by seventy-one million dollars. Three years ago, you said you wanted us to take care of the teachers. They've gotten a raise three years in a row. Qualified, experienced, accomplished. That's what I bring to the table. Thank you.
Improving teacher morale is one of my top priority and I, you know, better teachers hiring, retaining, and compensating better teachers is going to be a top priority. And also, uh, promoting vocational trades, we talked about a lot, that's going to be a priority issue, uh, school safety. And being married to a Fort Bend teacher and I have three children, I'm in the Fort Bend system and I'm a board certified financial planner, I understand money, budgeting. And check out my website, kptjoez.com, I hope you consider. Thank you.
Well, you know, I've showed up at the board meetings, I've stood up at the board meetings and I've spoke up for the parents, the students, and the staff. But I've gotten to the point, if it's a survivor analogy, I can't go any further without your help. What I need is, I need your help in early voting, I need your votes that I can continue on to that board and continue what I've been doing for the last eight years. And that is showing up, standing up, and speaking up. Thank you.